For me that I'll be driving.
Here.
The paper.
Here.
Gretchen.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ready.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, we have a, um, uh, presentation by City, South Sioux City Councilmember Oscar Gomez on Cardinal Honor Run to be held on Saturday, June 11th.
Yay, Oscar.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Oscar.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. Uh, I'll wait till they pass the flyers to you guys. Um, I'm here for two things. Uh, number one would be the, the honor Cardinal Honor Run that we're trying to do for the Cardinal Days here, uh, starting, uh, this year is the first year that we've done it, that we're doing it. Uh, it's a run that is a 10K run, 5K, and a one-mile walk. Uh, our idea is to have both South Sioux and Sioux City combine to have this event, not only do it this year, but hopefully to keep doing it for the future, for the future years. Uh, this event is sponsored by Siouxland Federal Credit Union, and again, it is done during our Cardinal Days. It'll be held, uh, June 11th at, uh, registration time is at seven P, uh, 7:00 AM, and the running, running will start at 8:00 AM in the morning. Um, 5K and the 10K run. Uh, the way that we're planning on doing it is to come across the Veterans Bridge, uh, coming towards Sioux City, uh, starting over by the Y, uh, coming over the bridge, going under the bridge, going through Lar, uh, Park Larson Road, um, and then using your guys' trail system, going towards, uh, Riverside Park. Uh, I think it's a, it's a huge event that I think, you know, could create a lot of numbers, uh, and joining, uh, the cities will be a huge, uh, advantage to our, to our system. A hundred percent of the proceeds will stay with, uh, locally. They are gonna be donated to support Siouxland soldiers, which they help veterans and military families, whether providing, uh, groceries, uh, meals, financial emergency grants, or care packages. So it's a, it's a, I think it's an event that it's a good community event that will help, uh, promote, uh, our veterans on this. Uh, I know that we're going through the process on the application as far as street closures and, uh, everything else that is needed. Uh, Angel Wallace has been a, a huge help for me to do this. Uh, this is just in, in a couple of weeks, you guys will have it for approval if you wish to. Uh, at this time, uh, is there any questions in regards to the event?
We'll save the date.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a team from Sioux City either run or walk, mostly running.
Shut that off.
How about?
We're gonna appoint Nicole as our proxy for that.
And she will run, and I'm sure, yeah, she'll probably do the 10K, I can see her doing that.
So one thing that we, and I know I didn't mention it, but one thing with the runners coming over the bridge, uh, we're not asking to close the bridge because I know how huge of a, of a hassle that is to do that with the DOT, but, uh, we are, uh, directing the walkers towards the, uh, Freedom Park area, so that way we don't have a, kind of a cluster coming down the bridge or over the bridge, so. And that is something that'll come to you guys.
How are you gonna get them across the bridge, just?
Through the, through the little walk path, yeah.
Okay.
So by that time that, we'll start by the Y. By the time they get to the bridge, they shouldn't be so much of a huge group that they bottleneck each other on there.
Maybe you can have the walkers on one and the runners on the other side. Because you know, if us council, if we all do that walk for like just a mile, that would not be real tough.
You'd end in South Sioux if you only do a mile.
Huh?
Yeah.
We'll make it to South Sioux, we'll, we may not make it anyway, Bob.
Well, very good, you guys, thank you for doing this, that's a great organization.
Yeah, thank you, it's, it's just informational at this time, but it'll come to you guys as, for, to ask for approval, so. So I do appreciate your guys' time, and that was the first thing that I had, and the second time, Mayor, I don't know if you wanna come up to the podium?
Well, it's a little overdue, Oscar.
This, uh, this doesn't happen very often. Well, that makes, that makes two of us, I'm not a Husker fan.
I'm gonna make sure we understand that you didn't wear the shirt today and I'm not wearing the shirt.
Perfect. So as, uh, agreed by the mayors, uh, unfortunately, our mayor is not able to be here, but he did mention that, uh, don't get too happy or in love with this plaque because it might come back this, this year.
All right, for those of you that don't know, we have an ongoing, uh, plaque that goes back and forth between the, the two city halls, uh, depending on the outcome of the Iowa-Nebraska football game. And Nebraska has hoarded this for about seven months longer, or about five months longer than you should have, but we're just glad to have it back, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I say, couldn't you put those like, uh, water park lily pads across the river for the runners to cross over? That way, if they don't make it, they just end up downstream.
All right, next we'll, uh, replace that person serving the committee, uh, with, uh, Skywalk being attached to the hospital and to our campus, we get a lot of traffic that comes through, uh, over to the hospital from the Skywalk, and then, uh, also folks that come over that work downtown, that come over and eat at our cafeteria and things like that, so I think it's good for us to kinda stay in the loop, uh, in regards to the Skywalk, and then we also have with the metered parking that's around our campus as well. Um, I've worked with Minette Harbeck, who's on that committee, uh, on, on a number of different things over the years, so, uh, that's kind of where my interest in, in serving on the committee comes from.
Lisa, what's our openings?
There are two openings on Park and Skywalk, and he would be replacing Scott from there.
Correct.
So there's two openings and one applicant, is that what you're saying?
Yes, uh, uh, Jeannie Zista was the business, she represented a downtown business, and she, we have not been able to replace her, has been open since April 2013.
Oh, well, I'd say you're in.
Looks good.
I appreciate your making application, especially being a representative of Mercy, because I, I think it is important that you're sitting on the board, Mercy's representing.
Thank you, I agree.
As well.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What days does this board meet? I believe it's the, uh, third Wednesday?
Second or third Wednesday of every month at nine o'clock?
Third Wednesday at nine.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yamanashi Sister City Committee, Committee Azusa Ellard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Tell us a little bit about why you wanna serve.
Um, I'm actually Japanese, ten years old. I'm currently working for FEH Design, and, uh, well, because of where I came from, my always been a broker.
Awesome, thanks for your interest, we appreciate it.
What part of Japan were you from?
I'm actually from Kobe, that's where I was born, and then I went to school in Tsukuba, which is about an hour and a half north of Tokyo.
North of Tokyo?
Yeah.
In Yamanashi City, if I remember, is it east?
Yeah, mhm, northeast, yes. I only visited once there personally, but, uh, my daughter was a part of the exchange student last year, and, uh, so my daughter experienced Yamanashi a little bit more.
All right, well, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One opening, three applications, we just got another one today.
Oh, really?
We had Randy Hanson, uh, February 22nd, and Gary.
And we have lots of people to serve. Maybe we'll have to expand, I think it used to be nine. So, we'll have to look at that. All right, next we'll go to the consent agenda, which is items three through 13C, you can consider an item to pass unanimously, unless a separate vote's called for by a council member. If you wanna speak on the item, please come forward during the, as I read it, state your name and address. If you wanna pu, speak on something not on the agenda, come up under Citizen Concerns, and again, give your name and address, I'll move the consent agenda.
Wow.
Second.
Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of March 14th, 2016. Four is a resolution supporting the submission of an IEDA application for the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program for Hands Property Management LLC, 3501 First Street. Five is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of, portion of Pier Street and the adjacent alleys on May 21st, 2016 to accommodate the Briar Cliff University Outdoor Graduation Reception. Six is a resolution approving the contract of Hawkins Construction for the 18th Street Bridge over the Floyd River Deck Replacement Project. Seven is a resolution authorizing final payment to Sioux contractors for the museum property facade renovation project. Eight is a resolution proposing to sell property part of the vacated alley east of Hamilton Boulevard, West 23rd and West 24 Streets, part of the vacated alley between 213 West 23rd Street and 238 West 24th Street. Nine are actions relating to grants, A is a resolution authorizing the staff to work with the IFA and the IDNR to modify the city's clean water state revolving fund sponsored project applications for the Perry Creek Watershed and the Ruveen Park Watershed Projects. B is a resolution authorizing the Sioux City Fire Rescue to submit a grand application to the FM Global Insurance for the Learn Not to Burn books to be utilized in the elementary schools. Ten are actions adopting construction documents, A is a resolution adopting plans and specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for the Jackson Street Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution adopting plans, specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for the Perry Way Reconstruction Project. C is a resolution adopting plans, specifications, form a contract, and estimated cost for the CBD Urban, or, uh, Infrastructure Improvements Project. Eleven are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor permits, see the list and come forward if you have any questions. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Thirteen are receipt of minutes, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items.
Mayor, I have a question on 10B, Perry Way. Is that, that's a reconstruction, and is that gonna be concrete, or is that, or do we get into this concrete asphalt discussion again, or not?
Well, now, the city engineer, that one will be bid as concrete only, a number of years ago, and we didn't include asphalt as an alternate back then.
All right, thanks.
What kind of water line?
Either or.
Design here in Sioux City, uh, Mayor, we have a, a C900 PVC alternate for the water main.
You couldn't find any contaminated waste within, like, 12 miles, a glen could make it, put ductile iron?
Not that one.
No.
I tried.
We have a big retaining, we have a big retaining wall, but not, uh, not contaminated.
Guys must get a lot of golf balls from those pipe guys, that's all I can figure out. Passes 5-0. Hearings, 14 is a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the traffic signal battery backup project, I'll move that. Passes 5-0, 15 is an ordinance pending chapter 8.04 entitled Firearms and Weapons of the Municipal Code to add prohibition on carrying simulated weapons, first reading passed, March 14th, 2014.
City Legal Department have a recommendation on this? I, I thought we'd talked, I had talked earlier.
There has been some interesting stress, um, um, from various council members asking that this be brought back at a later date, perhaps with an intent element included in a revision. I can turn it over to Justin if he has anything.
Justin Von Drack, Assistant City Attorney. Mayor and Council, we're gonna just make a few minor modifications to this to put in an intent element, to cure some of the overly broad worries that, uh, were raised at the last council.
So your, your proposed revision would address, there'd have to be more than just carrying the simulated firearm or weapon?
Right, there, there would be an intent element, uh, for an individual to, to cause fear or to make somebody else intimidated by the fact that they are carrying that weapon. Therefore, it's, it eliminates, uh, the potential for, uh, a 12 or 13-year-old playing army in the neighborhood to violate the law by walking across the property line. This will make it, um, a little bit tighter, and I believe, uh, still cure the problems that the police department is having with individuals carrying these weapons.
So if I recall correctly, I think the mayor gave an example last week of a, a paint gun being on the front seat of a car. Somebody's been to a paint, paintball thing, event, they throw it in their car, and they're heading home, and they get pulled over for.
This intent revision would cure that problem right there, and the, the example that the mayor described, um, would not be unlawful, uh, with an intent element present.
Are you gonna have a problem with, uh,
Proving the intent?
The proof of, yeah, proving what the intent?
I, I don't believe so, because I believe that it will be fairly clear when an individual is carrying that type of weapon, uh, into a Wendy's, or into a Hardee's, or, or into someplace like that, that, that they have no, no business or no reason to be actually carrying that type of, um, fake weapon even, into that type of establishment.
Now, there is a provision under our existing code about manner of conveyance, um, which dictates that weapons need to be stored in a proper carrying case, um, in vehicles currently, that's under the code as it's written right now, um, because there's a separate, um, provision that's on the books that disallows people from, um, threatening or using these simulated weapons in vehicles currently. Um, what we're talking about is something different outside of a vehicle.
That's limited, isn't that limited to BB guns and pellet guns?
Correct, it's a smaller airsoft, um, guns than the larger, uh, definitions, CO2 rifles and so forth.
But when I said last week, I was right, a person that has a permit, Pete can put that on his seat and drive all over town, and there's nothing that we can do about that.
With a loaded firearm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as they have permit.
Yeah, I'd, I'd talk to the sheriff, too.
And he could have one of these guns on his seat as long as.
No.
Yes, he can.
Can he?
Once he has.
Oh, if he's got the, okay, I understand what you're saying, if he has a permit.
He's got a permit to carry, it doesn't matter what he's carrying.
Yeah, but absent a permit, you cannot carry a loaded pellet gun, BB gun, paintball gun, anything that has the ability to, to discharge a pro, a projectile, you can't, you couldn't do that. But you're right, if they have, you're absolutely right, if you have the permit.
Yeah, we can go back to with shotguns in the back windshield of pickups, it's legal again, if you have a permit.
So the permit to carry is not limited to just the specific firearm?
To carry, to have it unexposed, you have to have a permit.
Really?
Yes.
Yep.
That's where no permits on rifles.
It doesn't matter, you have to have.
Probably just permit to buy, for me, you have to have a permit to buy a handgun.
With the permit that the mayor is talking about, that, that firearm could even be loaded, so, so this doesn't address, uh, the intent of, of our ordinance change doesn't address an individual with a concealed carry permit?
No, no. But the, the way it, is Kirby here? The way it read in the paper, it, it sounds like the city's trying to prevent people from transporting or possessing BB guns and pellet guns in the city, but that's not, that's not what we're doing.
I would disagree with, with that line of thinking.
Yeah, and, and in fact, uh, my daughter sent me an article from the Des Moines Register that said the same thing, that said the city was doing that, and we're not doing that, we're just, I, I think the intent of the request from the chief is a good one personally, uh, for fear of somebody with a look-alike weapon, you know, uh, would, uh, even accidentally pointed at a police officer or a law enforcement officer, and, and, uh, I've spoken both now with the sheriff and, and the chief, and, and I know how they'll react. And, and, uh, it's, if, if this will help avoid, you know, a tragedy from happening, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Councilman Greck, and I think with these revisions, it achieves the exact same goals that the police chief, uh, wished to achieve.
Yes.
With, with the last ordinance, but, but yet with, uh, eliminating some of the other concerns that would have come along with that bare bones type of, of ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let me ask though, because I, I must have, I'm wrong on this then, so a per, a permit to carry, it's good for any firearm? It's not specific to a firearm?
It's not, Dan, it's not even specific to a firearm, it's a permit to carry a concealed weapon, um, that permit.
A knife.
As defined in the statute?
As defined in state code.
The state code.
Could be a hammer, couldn't it?
Or it could be.
Be a knife.
It could be a shotgun, it could be, it's, it's the authority to, to carry a concealed weapon.
So then there's, so on top of that, then there's a registration process to go through?
Absolutely, there's an application process as well as, uh, you have to take a class, uh, there used to be a shooting requirement.
For each firearm that you own?
No.
No, you don't have to have it reg, you don't have to have each one registered?
No, you, no, you don't.
A box and a class.
Yeah. Then you have.
Fifteen, if you go to anywhere else, Drew thinks he's a little bit more expensive than other county sheriffs around, but we'll let that go, it all goes in the county general fund, so.
And, and the authority does rest with the sheriff of the county to issue, um, their permits.
It's a two-hour class, Dan, and they take a test at the end of it, they don't demonstrate any firearm proficiency. They don't look at weapons, they pass the test, they go to the sheriff, and, and he all but has to issue. He told me he was averaging about 400 a month.
We're a shall-issue state, so.
After last Monday, they filled the classes up again, you were the best thing they could do.
So Justin, what's your recommendation, then?
Uh, this, the legal department would like to bring this back with, at, at a later date with some, uh, modifications to satisfy the concerns that have been raised. A motion to delete is what I, what I would, um, like to see, but it's, it's up to you guys.
Delete as opposed to deferring it for two or three, four weeks?
Deleting it would give us more time, uh, to, to start and go over and, and get some feedback, uh, and it would, in essence, give us a little bit more, um, time.
And a cleaner process, so there wouldn't be any confusion about, um, how it is written, because we'd be changing it, um, quite a bit for months currently in front of the council. You know, it'd be easier just to have a clean copy all the way through.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to delete, Dan.
Second.
Call it called above?
Certainly.
Adrian?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Recommendations to the planning and zoning here in an ordinance titled 25 of the Municipal Code to allow childcare centers in the Public Institutional District and broadcasting centers in the Public Institutional General Commercial, mixed-use Business Park and General Industrial District as a limited use, clarifying freestanding sign standards in the suburban commercial district, clarifying walls signage for the multi-tenant structures, and to correct the minor Scrivener's errors, PNZ recommends approval.
Hi, uh, with this item was heard, and it's a number of issues, as, as with the new code, uh, we promised that there would be, as we went through it, started re, and we started, uh, applying it, there would probably be minor modifications, these are all minor modifications to the code to make it more in line with what we want it to do, what we want it to be.
So, we just paid $300,000 to have our code all right, right?
Well, I, we did, we, in fact, we did, that, that, as it relates to that, though, as we knew, as we would get into the code, and that as, at least from the planning zoning commission perspective, as we sat through meeting after meeting, we knew that as certain elements of the code were applied to, you know, certain situations, we may look at those and say, yeah, that, this one probably could be tweaked a little bit, it generally meets where we're going, but the code as a whole works just fine, but there's always minor modifications. I mean, every council before you has made modifications to the code.
And within three years, we're just gonna be right back to the code we used to have, right?
I don't, well, I can't predict the future, but.
Does this address the, does this address a tower in a neighborhood? No, we still aren't addressing the pressing issue.
No, this has nothing, there's nothing in here about cell phone towers and residential.
But it will allow now a TV station to move and put all kinds of towers up. Well, that's what it's doing.
We did, we did, we did broach the subject, so, but I'll have him give a more detailed analysis.
Charlie Callepliner, um, currently, uh, standalone wireless tele, telecommunications towers would be allowed in these zones by conditional use permit. Um, however, the, the broadcasting center as a use itself, um, was, would, wouldn't allow to have accessory equipment such as, uh, ground-mounted and tower-mounted equipment, so, this basically gives them the option, the ability to do that, um, in those zones in the general commercial district as well.
With any screening requirements?
Correct, all the, um, additional standards that come with wireless telecommunications towers would still apply, um, including the 200-foot setback from, uh, residential property screening for the, the ground-mounted equipment, um, and all those same standards.
And when could we expect that we'll get that tower that should have never been allowed out there in Morningside, problem solved?
That would have to come forward, uh, through a, a separate text amendment, we're still doing some research on the areas that we can prohibit cell towers versus allowing them.
Well, a cell tower should never, in my opinion, as long as we're rewriting it, be allowed in any zone that it doesn't come through the council, because we're the ones that catch all the heat for it. And that was a huge mistake out there, to allow that in that neighborhood. I'm, I'm just gonna be perfectly blank, honest with you, I, I think it was a horrible decision, and, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't want that in your backyard, I wouldn't want it in my backyard, but now neighbors are stuck with that, and let's just, you know, the, the cell phone companies are pretty much driven by profit, they really are not how they operate, I'll just be real candid, I could be a lot more candid, but, um.
By showing up with attorney friends is what you mean, right?
Well, other things, I mean, you know, the old phone companies used to have their name on projects around the community, but cell phone companies just don't, they, they're just committed to profit. They're just committed to profit and bottom line and really nothing else. And it's hard to be very sensitive to our neighbors. So I want to make it very difficult for them to just put those towers wherever somebody wants to make, you know, 1,400 bucks a month on it.
There should be a permit process of some kind.
Is, right now it's a conditional use permit, so it goes to the board of adjustment.
What's the fee for a permit for a cell tower?
The conditional use permit itself, I believe, is $250 and then.
But that all is eating up in costs.
Yeah, then there'll be building permit costs as well after the fact.
I'm suggesting maybe those fees are not high enough for that type of use.
And that's something I would have to look into, but yeah.
We've seen specifically.
And some of what the council is allowed to do is regulated under state code. There have been changes in the last few years at the state level that have broadened what carriers are allowed to do within municipalities.
But you can zone those out.
You can. Cities can always look at zoning.
Right.
But you have to do it within the parameters of what you're comparing to other entities of small.
Exactly.
We've seen, I mean, in the past, we've seen similar projects like this of this nature where there's a vacant piece of land and somebody wants to put up an apartment building and the neighbors object, or it's developed in some way, even with a single family, and they object because they don't want that several.
Towers are a lot different. They're 168 feet.
Some would argue towers would be better than an apartment building. I'm just saying you might get arguments on both sides, Mayor. It's a, it's a difficult spot to be in. And I, and I, I can't remember if I talked with Justin or Charlie, but I agreed with what the mayor just said today that maybe we should just have a blanket elimination of towers in residential zones because why put them through the process of bringing it to us and with the current council, it could be a 3-2 vote or a 5-0 vote? Why not just prohibit it altogether?
Well, maybe I'm the only one, but I'd like some provision in there that.
I can't think of anything right now offhand, Mayor, but when I was on planning zoning, there were a couple of projects I think the neighborhood would have welcomed a tower over what was actually built next to them on property they didn't own.
See, what I don't understand is what happened here, because when the people out on the seven-day Adventist church proposed one of these towers, we had the final say.
Yeah.
But now this spiffy new $300,000 zoning ordinance took that away from us.
Yeah, so now, I just had to, had to double check something with City Legal before I said anything. The, yeah, the process changed from the time you looked at the tower on the north side versus the time you looked at the tower on the south side. It went from a planning and zoning commission recommendation, which then would go to you, to a board of adjustment conditional use permit review process. They had to fit certain criteria. They had to be within 200, over 200 feet away from property lines. Some of those things that you've probably been educated that they had to meet certain criteria. And when the board of adjustment looks at it, it's a quasi-judicial legal proceeding where we look at specific standards and there are certain things we can't look at legally. We can't look at other sites. We can't look at, we can't look at other sites. We also were prohibited from looking at, I'm trying to think of the other.
The safety aspects.
Yeah, the safety aspects, which a number of the neighbors were concerned about. Those can't be considered in a judicial, quasi-judicial proceeding like we went through. And so we looked at the standards of a conditional use permit, just like the board of adjustment has many times before looked at. And we went through those standards, standards like, will they be served by utilities properly? Well, yes, obviously they would have. And they met all those general criteria. Now, if you want to ban them or if you want to have a different process, you know, the planning zoning commission will be happy to look at that and ultimately you'll make the decision. We always make recommendations, you make decisions. But that, that was the plate handed to us. And we looked at it and there was some disagreement among the board. We did listen to their concerns. And we, I understand their concerns. I don't live very far from that neighborhood personally. But based on the facts and the evidence provided at the time, that's the way I voted and the way the majority of the board voted. If you want to change that process, it's your code. You're more than welcome to have a proposal and to vote on that yourselves. So we understand your frustration. We understand that you got blamed for it or that you received some blame for it. But, you know, we had to make the decision that was presented by us by the code.
I'm not even saying you made the wrong decision. You missed my point. When it affects a neighborhood in a negative way, and that one does, then it should put, that's my point. I didn't say you did anything wrong. You're misinterpreting what I said.
I understand. It's just we've received a lot of heat on the back end too, that this is.
But that's, you know what?
And that's fair. That's fair.
Because you made the decision, so.
Yeah, we did.
But we, we received a lot of heat on that and had nothing to do with it. And that's my point. And we rejected that one up on the north side because it was not in the right place, which quite frankly was a lot further away than what this one is. And we rejected it. And we would have, I think this council would have rejected this one.
I'm not, this is my personal opinion. I'm not speaking for planning zoning commission. Show me a council that will approve one in a residential area.
None.
You're not, Verizon Wireless is never going to have some constituency with you. You're going to have neighbors around the area who are going to come forward.
That has nothing to do with it. They can build cell towers that are different than what they want to build here. Why they build them the way they build them here is because it's cheap. They don't get to build them like that in California. They make them look like Redwoods out there.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen the pictures, yeah.
Exactly. But here, we let, we have no design standard whatsoever. We let it go to a planning and zoning commission quasi-switch over. We become the board of adjustment meeting. Not blaming you. It's the way this guy wrote it for 300,000 bucks. And then we don't have any design standards whatsoever. I said I might have voted for the one up north if it would have been something besides an ugly monopole that looked like a piece of steel hanging up there. But they don't want to do anything extra in our community. But they, in California, they don't get away with this.
I understand where you're coming. And that's where you can modify the code to suit what you're looking for.
And so if, if you're stuck, and you are, then that to me isn't a good solution. And the rest of them can say, you know, they don't want you to change it. That's fine. That's their choice, but.
Well, if they really need to get neighbors on board in the future in order to get the approval, you know, maybe there would be compensation for the neighbors that are seeking loss of value.
It's difficult to quantify.
Money does talk.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I don't.
What I don't want to have happen though is that the council would be bound by the same rules and regulations that the board of adjustments bound by.
No, and, yeah, and you wouldn't be.
Yeah, because if we can't make a decision based on what the court cases read and what's upheld, then we're going to be in the same spot. So that's where you'd want to probably prohibit the use of the towers in the.
No, because council can always reject it.
The new, just in a nutshell, just for the council's benefit and the public's benefit, a state or local government cannot and reasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services, may not regulate in a manner that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services, and must act on applications within a reasonable time period and must make any denial of an application writing supported by substantial evidence.
Yeah, but now we're stuck. We put one in a residential neighborhood, so in the future, we're stuck.
But you can still regulate by zoning, but you have to follow the set criteria.
But we had that, is my point. But now they're going to come in and say, you put one in, you allowed one in a residential neighborhood, and we're going to have a tougher sell the next time around. I'm practicing law counselor, but I know I'm right on that.
The old code had a tower over like.
I can hear their attorneys in the chamber now. And they'll bring a lot of them, because they have a lot of money to spend on that rather than runs for like veterans and those sort of things that they never participate in. So they could do themselves a favor by being somewhat more supportive of the community and maybe neighbors wouldn't be quite so upset too. There is a thing about being a good corporate citizen.
There's a lot of people concerned about potential health risks of having a tower of some kind too.
Which can't be addressed.
Exactly.
I mean, you've got the feds and you've got the state that have written laws that impact the decision-making process that concern the neighbors the most. And that's, that's the lay of the land, like it or not.
Prescription drug, it'd be seven years before anyone would even get to try it. If it's a potential technology improvement.
Well, the council rest, I'm going to have to give direction. I know where I'm at. I'd like to see something. This, this should have never been changed in our zoning. It's another case of, thank goodness I didn't vote for that deal. Mr. Hanson. Is there a motion on?
So, okay, we're voting on what then?
You're voting on the recommendation from planning zoning to multiple changes. This is multiple different changes with inside the code that we get based upon what we've seen take place in the market since we've passed the code.
You know, of course, this is, we don't get the homework on this, but I'm curious on the free, on the signs on a multi-tenant building, would we allow one sign?
The currently multi-tenant buildings or just really any building that wants to have multiple signage would have to go through what is called a sign design program. Basically allowing multiple signs from different tenants approved by the planning and zoning commission. There's kind of a difference between a shopping mall, however, and a college campus versus like a Hy-Vee that has a bank or a credit.
Right, that's what I'm saying. What did they allow in this new ordinance? Just one sign? If you were to build a new Hy-Vee with a bank in it, or what'd they allow?
It would have allowed multiple signs, but it would have had to go through essentially, you could call it a site plan process for signage through the planning and zoning commission.
This allows them by right.
I'm not sure where I'm at. I'm a little confused. If, I mean, I.
The city's the petitioner on it.
I tend to agree with the mayor that depending upon the structure in the neighborhood's desire.
That isn't in here, Pete.
No, I know that. So I, I would like the council to have the ability to, to vote on those as they individually come up. And I'm, for the most part, interested in maintaining the integrity of neighborhoods. And I think that's what I was doing when I voted against the cell tower on the north side. I think the major complaint there was from the residents of the community that, or from the neighborhood that, you know, their investment in their neighborhoods are theirs and the integrity that they have was, was important to them and they didn't want this big ugly tower. And I tend to agree, and I think councils should have some ability to address those issues. There may be neighborhoods where people want them for whatever the reasons may be, so. I guess.
So you're, you're talking about the cell phone tower issue?
Yes.
You're not, you're not talking about the, what you guys are looking at right now, which is, the, what you're looking at right now doesn't have anything to do with cell phone towers. We kind of went down a separate discussion route that kind of.
I thought towers were included.
Yeah, just to clarify, the, currently there's a land use in the zoning code for broadcasting centers. And within, within that, there's standards for certain zoning districts that, that state whether or not you can have ground-mounted equipment or tower-mounted equipment. And this would just amend that to allow certain standards for tower-mounted equipment in these zoning districts where wireless telecommunication towers are already allowed through a conditional use permit. So it would be the same standards, it's just for the general commercial and public institutional districts makes them, makes them possible, I guess.
Sorry if we muddied the water there. Muddied the waters for you, going down the cell phone route, so.
Yep.
Well, that's why it's important for me. That's why I said when I started this, make sure that we're not doing the same thing here without some screening.
Yes.
These big dishes are not as attractive as other things might be in your neighborhood.
Yeah, and these aren't changing the regulations in any residential zoning districts.
Yeah, it's, this is, yeah.
No, I'm not talking about residential. I'm talking any neighborhood ought to have screening from those.
Right, right. And these would still have.
I like the ivy growing on the fence up for Channel 9 on 14th Street. You made them cut, at least you didn't have to look at those big satellite dishes. I find rather unattractive.
The sad thing is, it's one of the most attractive things in the world.
Easy game right now. Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greck?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
We're going to get to John eventually back there.
Maybe, maybe not.
And I was sitting back there going, man, this is going to be a short meeting. And here I'm the one dragging it out for you.
Passes 5-0.
Mayor and council, City Legal can work with planning and make some amendments and bring forward some proposed changes to the cell towers.
Well, poll the council first. I don't want to be the one that.
It sounds like we have support, I guess, but with your direction. And obviously it'd come back for an ordinance change that council could vote up or down.
Seventeen's a resolution approving the final plat for, for final plat of Discount Tire Hamilton Boulevard. P&amp;Z recommends approval.
I have a conflict on this one, so staff will present.
Chris Mattson, senior planner, this was approved 4-0 with one abstention. This is the combination of seven existing lots and the alley right-of-ways that were approved for sale earlier in the agenda. This is not required by our subdivision code or zoning code. This is the petitioner wishing to combine all these lots into one parcel.
We have a motion? I'll move it.
Second.
Next time you say, I'll move it and second.
I thought about that.
Passes 5-0. Eighteen's a motion approving the preliminary plat of Whispering View. Third, eighth filing. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
This item came before us. There was a good amount of discussion. This is going to be one of the, if not the last, one of the last residential build-outs in the Whispering Creek area. Some residents, a number of neighbors spoke in favor. There were a few residents that, there was one resident that expressed some concern about losing trees in part of this area and, but ultimately the planning zoning commission recommended approval.
That was a primary concern, loss of trees?
Well.
There's not much for windbreak out there.
Well, you, when you, if you look at the map of it, this is my, as we looked at, when you look at the map, there are certain homes that have a very nice view. This is vacant land. It's got trees and it's got some grow out. And so the view is going to be affected because you're going to be building some homes on this land that wasn't developed before. I think they were just sharing concern that, you know, the view's going to change. Is there anything we can do in the plating process to protect some of the, some of the wildlife vegetation that had grown there and, but ultimately the, this, we didn't feel like this was the appropriate place to do any of that.
Tell them their neighbors were concerned in the past when they built their place too.
How many towers are you putting up?
None. We're not putting up any towers.
Sorry, couldn't help myself.
I don't know what it costs to put a bunch of trees on your lots there, John, but that's one thing. I always get a lot of customers out there that are buying multiple patio sets because their first one blew away or.
Think what you need to do is put a tower in Grandview Park so that.
Maybe have like a tower climb challenge.
What? Now, now we've got, now we've got tower jokes.
And then what up above you on that Virginia street, we've got, we own it. We just will allow towers in all those city parks.
I went to Cherokee and I actually saw a tower in a schoolyard, cell phone tower in a schoolyard.
That's a better place for it.
Make it a giant tetherball tower.
John Solsmack, 5000 South Coast Boulevard. The trees in question are in an area that always was up for development. Our preliminary plat back in 2006 showed this area being developed, but now we're just modifying it. It's not as big.
Yeah, it wasn't initially going to go either further east or north. I can't remember.
It was going to go further east and a little bit south. There was actually two cul-de-sacs originally, and now there's only one.
That's, I mean, I remember discussions of this from years ago, so it's been known for a while that this was going to be.
Oh, yes. And the people knew it at the time, right?
It's come across on any project we have ever done, any plating. It's come across on any project we've ever done, any plating, somebody's always opposed because they're gonna lose the view or the vacant lot.
Right.
I look at towers on a case by case basis and that's part of the reason why I wanted to refer it back to you. Because remember, the neighbor said we didn't have an opportunity to be heard and we're gonna hire a lawyer and we're gonna come prepared. Remember they said that?
Yes.
And they said it happened too quickly, so I made the motion that we send it back to you.
Yep.
Remember that?
I absolutely do remember that.
Mayor's not listening to me. He doesn't care anyway.
I absolutely remember that.
Listening to you.
I learned a long time ago.
Remember that?
You know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna discuss it. I wanna, I wanna put a tower in Grandview and I wanna put one up on Virginia Street. I wanna put a tower in every city park we have to generate revenue. You for that? Are you for that? Because I'm all for it.
No, no, it's gotta go through the process and I really-
Well, that's where I wanna go.
They thought they had an excellent case, but they, but then you told me they didn't, they didn't come prepared and you, you didn't even hear it.
No, okay, number one, I don't believe I spoke to the issue. I remember you saying, I remember, I went through-
Not you, I mean your board.
I watched this on YouTube and I kinda got your comments back and I, I understood where you guys were essentially going. There's always two sides to every story.
Even John sat down. He's-
Just, I gotta-
I wanna say I support you, but I, but it's a case by case basis for me. So no, I'm not, I'm not just gonna blanket the city mayor with towers.
Well, I've changed my mind. I don't want it to come, go back to P&amp;Z then leave it the way it is.
But, no, it's too late.
No, it's, oh, not too late.
No, it's too late. It's ten till five.
I'll just vote no when it comes, cause I want them everywhere, so.
I gotta start racking my brain.
I don't know why we're not putting them in parks for revenue generators.
You know what that would do?
Generate revenue?
Who, who, the towers are serving who? Who's being served by the towers? Are the citizens of the, of the city? I mean, that tower that you approved, who, that tower's serving?
The customers of that company.
Yes, Verizon.
But customers where? In Sioux City or customers in rural America?
Based on what I remember hearing, it's, it's, it serves the citizens of Sioux City. I don't think it goes that far out to the world.
That specific neighborhood too, is it?
No.
Because Verizon has a tower on the northwest side.
They keep bouncing. All right, let's move ahead here.
Waiting for one vote here.
John just wants to leave.
Before I get more, more tower, more tower jokes.
Pass is five zero. Nineteen's a hearing resolution accepting a proposal of Hangar One LLC for the lease of land in Donna Park Urban Renewal, 5931 Pershing Street, deferred from March 14th, 2016. I'll move that.
Second.
Um, there were a few requested revisions. Councilman Moore had a few things that he wanted to have changed, which have been done and incorporated into this agreement. However, I would point out that personal guarantees are not included by members of the LLC, the entity that is subject to this agreement. There was discussion and negotiation with individuals that will be leasing the hangar space once it is constructed and there wasn't an agreement that was reached related to personal guarantees. They, they did not feel that they could move forward with that. So as proposed in the agreement before the council, that is not included.
Who's the people? Yeah, I mean, if the LLC doesn't have any assets, the indemnification provisions aren't going to be as meaningful as if you had personal guarantees. Bankers require personal guarantees. You see them a lot. And I just think the mayor and the council need to be informed that this does not have any personal guarantees in it. Did they, did, did you get a signed copy back?
I believe that signed copies were included in the council or the clerk's packet as of last Friday.
Mayor, I don't know how you feel about that.
I gotta sign everywhere I go.
I do too. I mean, for the lease itself, the lease payments, what I'm concerned about. And, and we increased the amount of insurance coverage. I don't know if it's high enough or not for the aircraft that would be in there, but it's increased significant liability insurance. But where it comes into play is if there's a, if there's liability or exposure that's in excess of the insurance amounts, the indemnification provisions would kick in.
Are we making them have any, any, uh-
If it's a shell LLC.
Is it a triple net where they're paying for the insurance on the building?
Yes.
Correct.
So we are a loss payee or it's an additional insurer, whatever you want us calling, depending on where you're at.
Because it's a 20-year lease with two 10-year options, we've written in it that every five years the amounts of the insurance coverage will be, will be increased. Cause right now it's at $3 million each occurrence and $5 million annual aggregate. Did you find a signed copy?
The mayor has the, um, stack. We have, we have executed copies here if you look to the cabinet.
Well, where do you actually sign the dumb thing? I've got witnesses, a signature.
Mike, what do you think about that? Personal guarantee of-
Well, I think, I think given what it is, I think we recommend moving forward with Alco's. We'd be okay with that. Given the use of the, the structure.
Most landlords are requiring that now too.
It's an unreasonable request. It's not out of the ordinary. They're, they're just in the negotiations. You're saying they're just not willing to do that.
So who is it?
Is this the name that I, um, do have was the attorney, the person, LLC, these are the other individuals that are listed on there.
They have their own plane?
Yes.
See if we have a signed copy. Let's see if they gave us a signed copy. So the personal guarantee we're talking about, is that just for the rent? If they walk away from the lease?
Yes.
If their insurance proceeds were not enough to take care of any issues.
The problem with an LLC is you don't even know the members. Do we know the members?
Wasn't that the one that was signed before?
Uh, I do not know all the members.
How many planes are in there?
There, well, I can't say how many they proposed. I, I believe they proposed to put two in there.
Do we know who the people are?
I do. They, they prefer to, to be anonymous as far as the, who's the, all the members. I, I don't know who all the members are, but the driving member, that's- The people we're working with, I, I know who they are. They, they prefer not to be named publicly in the process.
How much is the building worth?
Well, it depends on what their finish out is. We're, we're putting up a shell structure. It's gonna be approximately $600,000. We're gonna put in $300,000. They're gonna put in the other piece. Then they'll finish it out to whatever their desire is. That'll be all these old improvements that they're costing.
But they have to obtain general liability insurance in the amount of three month. Wouldn't that be enough to cover?
That has no bearing on paying rent.
So we are talking about if they just walk away from it?
I don't know. I'm, I'm kinda with Dan, especially-
You have a signed copy?
The greatest thing about LLCs is you can have nothing in them. And you can sign leases and I'm not sure the city should be any different than any other landlord. And another landlord, I can almost tell you, I don't know very many of them that don't either require a personal guarantee or the, you know, it's with a major, major company that has a lot of wherewithal.
Yeah, substantial asset.
And maybe Mike stated this as I was looking through the document and I may have missed it. Um, they do have an upfront investment contribution to this hangar and maybe, did you state that, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, they will, they will cover the balance of the initial structure cost of what that is and then, you know, the finish out will approximately, I don't know their exact budget, cause it's their money. They can put in what they want, but my guess is it's gonna be significant to their liking based on the size of hangar and their desire and their aircraft.
And the ownership will revert to the city. The city will own the structure.
Yes.
In 40 years, which will be a tear down, but like all 40-year-old hangars.
If there's a breach of the lease agreement, I mean, if we have to go through that process, mediation, arbitration, that's how the agreement is currently set up.
They will have more invest in the property than we will.
At that point. To, to just keep in mind, I'm not speaking in favor, not in favor, but there'll be more of an investment on the front end by the entity.
Are we voting?
Mm-hmm. Pass is five zero. Citizen concerns? Being done, we'll go to council concerns.
I just wanted to thank all of the city employees, volunteers, center plate catering fans who participated in the NAIA Women's National Basketball Championship. Did I jump ahead of my-
No, I'm, I'm waiting patiently.
Okay, and, and especially Corey Wester and Mike Skaggs, because they once again acted as co-directors. I don't know how many years they've been doing it now, but they do a great job down there and from all indications, it was a, a great success. So I wanted to thank everybody and certainly all the fans that took advantage of the opportunity to see, uh, great basketball and a, and a good event. So I just wanted to let them know and all the city staff involved that they did, I thought it was really a, a great event for the city. And that's really about all I have to say.
Go ahead, Dan.
Are you done?
Yeah. Oh, you know what?
We had a multicultural fair.
Yeah, we went to a multicultural, um, event yesterday and awesome. I was so impressed with all the different, um, activities they had and all the different, uh, people in there singing and dancing and, and everything. It was-
Attendance numbers were up?
Yeah, I heard over 2,500. So it was very good. So thank you for putting that on. We appreciate it.
That's all I have too.
Wow.
I know.
This has been a slow week for us. I saw in our notes there, they were discussing the convention center, Skywalk Security and maybe locking the Skywalk at the convention center on non-event days. To relay a story from Home Furniture, we decided to start locking our store entry to the Skywalk and we were confronted and told we couldn't do that because we were restricting access, but yet there was still a stairwell in our building that allowed you to get to the sidewalk and you could just go a block over and have a, an elevator down at the parking ramp. So we weren't restricting any access to the street and we're still allowing access through the building the entire way. We just restrict access to the store and usually we have a phone number you can knock and we'll let people through still. But on the convention center, if you walk all the way down that hallway, there's no stairwell down. There's no other way through. So you would be restricting access through there. And I don't know that there's anything of value that people are gonna just reach in and steal out of the convention center as opposed to, say, our location where, you know, furniture did go out the Skywalk. So you might wanna consider that in the discussion. I don't know if they decided anything in the E Fab meetings, but who would-
The whole center of stuff is set up. I don't blame them for locking down.
But this is, they're saying non-event days.
Right, but why wouldn't they, I, I'm, I'm for that as long as they put some sort of sign up that, on that end like it says it's closed, so.
Because if you turn at the hotel and you start walking down, I mean, you walk almost a block and a half, two blocks, and then you find those doors closed, like locked.
That's why they should put-
Have to be locked at the doors at the hotel then.
Well, you can, you can still go from the hotel south to, what is it, Stiefel, there's a building south you can get to still, so. But something all the way at the end of the hallway, if they're gonna lock that. I, I went down that once for, uh, I think it was an E Fab meeting and I got all the way down there and it was locked. Had to go all the way back to the hotel, go down the street and then across the street and then up the stairs to the E Fab meeting.
Well, you're probably ready to eat by then.
Yeah. It's always good food there.
Yeah.
But I just saw that in the notes and thought, you know, if we're gonna start locking that, there's either gotta be some kind of warning so you don't go all the way down there to find it locked, or maybe you should really consider the, you know, how they're gonna correspond to other businesses and say, well, you can't lock it because you're restricting access. And now if the city sets the precedent that they can lock access, what other businesses could just, I mean, that's an actual hallway out with stairwell down. I mean, it's everything. It's kinda like us locking the door that goes east to west through the Skywalk and through our building. I mean, we, we have an easement. We can't lock that. So, and I, I don't know that the convention center can either.
We'll have to check over the catch.
Oh, I had something else there. Oh, yeah, I went up to the hill overlooking our future Cone Park site there. Looks like that's gonna be a fun tube ride. I, where are we at in bidding out to know how much we were gonna do on that? Because we had discussed, you know, depending on bid pricing, whether or not we're gonna do the full tube run all the way up or if we're just gonna build phase one tube run and ICE.
Actually, Matt Salvatore would know the answer. I, I was part of the review team to review the plans and they had cost estimates developed and felt from just the cost estimates, they were over budget, so they were scaling back. But I don't know at what stage they're at currently.
So are we still planning to have that open next winter or is it the following winter?
I think it's this coming.
That's what I thought, cause we're supposed to do grading this summer.
Right.
And then you'd have carpet lift and snowmaking material at the same time.
I think he's still planning for this next winter.
Okay. Looks like it's gonna be fun. And I would recommend doing the full tube run if we can because that's, again, the only place we're gonna make any profit off this park. Everything else is gonna be a break even or a loss at best. So just keep that in mind as we get our bids. That's it.
You're standing there because you know I'm gonna say something.
I just, before the meeting closes, I have an update on 14th and Jackson and I didn't want you to-
Update on what?
14th and Jackson.
Yeah?
Uh, the current owner still hasn't proceeded with demolition and the city today started to collect bids for, to step in and do the demolition. We expect to have a resolution for your vote on Monday, a week from today, pending action by the current owners of the building to tear down the rest of the, the building themselves. But at this point, it's looking like the city is going to step in, finish the demolition and assess the property and possibly subsequently file suit against the property owner.
We should give 14th and Douglas a hearing right away too.
Did you, um, did we get stop signs out Petersons? You were gonna email me, I thought, but maybe I misunderstood you. Did we get them out there yet?
I was through there, oh, a week and a half ago. I saw the street name signs and they're temporary stop signs, I believe, on the side streets. They're not permanent. I believe the feedback I had heard is they put them up and within that week, Mid-American contractor or a contractor had already knocked over one of them. So that's why they don't wanna put up permanents right away. But that's my understanding. That's correct.
Well, again then, could we correspond with, like maybe me so I could correspond with the owner who asked me and you to get that? Could we at least correspond with them and tell them why we're not doing it? It's not, it's just not good- It's not, it's just not good PR when we don't do that.
I thought we had shared that prior, when he made the request earlier in the year, and then I know he pushed to get them installed. I know internally, we are thinking of revising a process or the process, so that it can be a little more smooth and working with the developer more.
Well, I'm just saying, it would be nice if you have no plans to put the signs up, so that I can send them an email and tell them that we're not going to put signs up then.
Well, we... Sure.
Okay, because last time we were here, I thought we were putting signs up, is what I was told.
Well, they are, they're just temporary, they're not firmly planted in the ground. I mean, they're on sandbags and tripod type thing, but...
Okay.
They're identifying the location.
So there are some stop signs somehow out there?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to ask the council to consider this. You know where I'm at on cameras. Could we at least have on the agenda the one on Outer Belt and Lewis Boulevard? I think the state's 100% right. I think it causes more accidents than it solves. I've felt like that for how long?
Yeah.
And, you know, it's like we're in this mode, if we somehow give in to the state we've given in to them, I don't believe that at all. If we have a camera that causes more problems, and I think the data shows that, by the way, then why would we not do what we ought to do and take it down? So I'd like that on the agenda, to vote it up or down, and you can give me all the reasons legally why we shouldn't do it at that time, but if the data is what the data is, then we ought to be concerned about safety, if that's what our concern is, and I think it is. But if they're counter-safety and not doing what they're supposed to do, then I think we should look at that.
I thought we talked about putting up better warning signs.
I asked for that three years ago. I asked for flashing lights back behind that bridge. It's never going to happen.
We just have photo-in-force signs.
We've asked for those multiple times.
We just have the photo-in-force signs.
We asked the same thing on Palmetto, too. So...
We'll have something on the agenda.
Thank you. I move we adjourn.
Well, I have a question for Justin on the Fourteenth and Jackson. I understood, and maybe I'm getting my issues mixed up at coffee with council, but I understood that there was some insurance, some dispute with the insurance company.
No.
I don't believe that's the issue at this time. The property, we've had numerous meetings with the property owner and their attorney, and we've had several promises of demolition would be incurred. We just wanted to see contracts. All we needed to see was a contract between a contractor and themselves, and we would stop demolition. We gave them a deadline of 9:00 AM this morning, and we've been working them for, I'm sorry, we've been working with them for about two and a half weeks with no progress. The city's the one who had to go up and put up the fences to make sure the site was somewhat secure, but there's still some ongoing concerns about asbestos in the air, as well as concerns about collapse in the building. Every day, it seems like there's a little more collapse here or there, and it's just really an unsecure, unstable site, and it poses an imminent danger.
I know they've, I know the whole situation pretty well, and I think that they doubt that it's supposed, the bid was supposed to be eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, I think, for demo. I think that he had, was very leery about that, about the price, about how much it's going to cost, but, you know, he's got asbestos, and there's a lot of other things involved in it that I don't think he understands, so...
Bid seems cheap all of a sudden, if there's asbestos.
I can't answer that. I know that the bids are coming in right in that range, so it appears where it's going to be.
I mean, either way, he's going to have to pay it either way. He, you know, he's either front end or back end. He's going to have to pay it, so if he wants to get that SLK mark up, he's going to, something's got to be done really quick, and it's a liability out there. You know, it's not a good situation, so...
Is there one other thing? This is new, but it was brought to me over the weekend. Could we find out just what other communities have experienced with splash pads? I didn't know the answer to that, so maybe if we...
Answers that would be no different from any other park. First time somebody gets hurt, we're going to hear about it.
But I just don't know what the, how frequent that would be. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yep, I thought of something, Bob. I think we should thank the police department for going out there this morning and giving out free coffee on Fourth and, on Fourth Street.
What was that?
The police department was giving free coffee to drivers, thanking them for being careful.
Where at?
It was on Fourth and, I didn't hear that either.
For pedestrian safety.
I don't care.
All right.
What was it, Doug?
Part of pedestrian safety efforts.
You had it on the news last night, if you're watching.
Evidently not.
What channel should we have been watching?
There only one.
Oh! Just kidding.
Like that scene from Anchorman all of a sudden.
It would be channel four that was on, by the way.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Bradick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we talk about...
Hey Glenn, I've got a different number for you.
Hey Glenn, I've got a different number for you.